If someone could please give a thumbs up or just indicate that you can hear us.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Going to call us to order here. This is the October 8, 2024 City of Portland Planning Commission meeting. I'm the Chair Mary Ray Noemera. I'm joined in person by Commissioner Lang, Vice Chair Thompson, Vice Chair Pounceel, Commissioner Alexander, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Ames. And just checking online, I know that Commissioner Spivak will be absent today. We will get started with any items of interest from commissioners. Okay, not seeing indication for any. Patricia, moving over to you for a director's report, please.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Noemera, Commissioners. Just a few things to put on your radars, largely kind of calendaring things. Wanted to make sure that you know about items that are coming up at City Council that have been before this commission. So the code projects that you saw recently, the three that were running on the same timeline, the Rose Quarter Sign District, the Housing Compliance Project, and the Oder Project, will be going to City Council on October 30. And I believe Vice Chair Thompson has agreed to present the Planning Commission's recommendations at those meetings, those hearings. So thank you so much, Vice Chair Thompson. On November 13, the Large Tree Fee and the Montgomery Park Area Plan are slated to be going to City Council. And Chair Noemera will be presenting the Planning Commission's recommendations on those items. So thank you, Chair Noemera. Wanted to also just let you know, this is very tight timeline, but the TIFs items that are the Tax Increment Finance Districts that are before you today are actually slated to go to council on 10/23. So just be aware of that. And then as far as some other kind of logistics, we have, as you know, we've been working to schedule a Part Two to a retreat that we had earlier this year. We were tentatively looking at October 22 for that retreat. But in fact, I think for a variety of reasons, we'd like to go ahead and suggest moving that to November 12. Got some feedback already from some commissioners that that date might actually be better. So appreciate that. Hope that that works for everyone. That would be at our regularly scheduled meeting time on November 12. So I believe that's an evening meeting. Am I right about that? Oh, sorry. Pardon me. That's a daytime meeting. Forgive me. So just very high level, the agenda for the retreat, we're going to be going over sort of the best practices discussion that we have been sort of in the middle of. We're going to talk about significant transportation projects. We're going to go through the city organizational chart with the new form of government and kind of give an overview of that. Talk about recruitment for this body, the Planning Commission, and the upcoming calendar, which I'll touch upon a little bit now, but we'll go into more detail at the retreat. And we'll be sending any documents that you'll need to review in advance of that, hopefully by earlyish November. We'll try to get things out to you in advance. So just many of you know, I sent an email communication that the Commission, we don't have a lot of business queued up to be coming to the Planning Commission. Currently, we brought a lot of things to you this year, and we're sort of in that juncture where many projects are in progress, but there's nothing impending to be coming to the Planning Commission. So we had advised that there will be sort of a low a little bit in the calendar, but we wanted to make sure to let you know that we'll keep those meetings on the calendar. We'll keep in touch as we approach each of the meetings. A few weeks out, we'll kind of be in communication and let you know whether the meeting will occur or not. We need to stay kind of nimble in case some item does come up. So just wanted to make sure that that's on your radar. And so November, we'll have the retreat on the 12. We'll likely not have any meetings in December, but we'll likely have a meeting in January. And I'll talk more about that in the, at the retreat. Okay. I think that concludes my kind of updates and sort of calendaring items. Please let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, Chair Noemera, I'll hand it back to you. We can get started.
Thank you, Patricia. And want to welcome Commissioner Ralph, who's here in person. And we will now move on unless there are questions about the director's report. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still move?
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We will have a vote. So all in favor? Aye. Okay, consent agenda is approved. And now moving on to the first item of business for the agenda. This is a street vacation request, RW number 9443, Southeast Corether Street, east of Southeast 66th Avenue. This is a hearing and a recommendation. We do have two people signed up to testify, and I have a note to just ask if there's anyone else here to testify. Please see Julie to sign up. But first, we are welcoming Kevin Balak from PBOT. Thank you.
Share my screen for you.
And while you're doing that, are there any disclosures from commissioners related to this item? Okay, thank you.
All right, let me share my screen here with you. Okay. Great. Good afternoon, Plank Commissioners. My name is Kevin Balak. Again, I'm supervisor with the Real Property Services Group at PBOT. I'm here to talk today about the proposed vacation of Southeast Corether's east of Southeast 66th Avenue. The requested action today is for the Plank Commission to recommend approval of the street vacation request with conditions to the City Council. Just from a staff perspective, I want to highlight that Southeast Corether Street currently does not have a need for right of way or for transportation purposes. So just a high level, the purpose of a street vacation is to extinguish the public's interest in the street right of way or the street area. And the city does not own the street area in fee title, but rather has an all incumbent easement, leaving the property owner with the right of reversion. So just a couple of quick points, the five criteria. The area to be vacated is not needed presently and is not needed and adopted to plan for transportation uses. Two, the vacation does not prevent the extension or retention of public services, transportation functions, et cetera. Three, public services, transportation functions, or utilities can be extended in an efficient manner in an alternate location. The vacation does not impede the future best use development or access to a budding property. And finally, five, the area vacation is not presently or will not in the future be needed as part of an interconnected system of public streets. Let me get into the proposed purpose for this vacation. The stated purpose is that Southeast Corether Street is a dead end fragment of right of way that is no longer needed for transportation purposes. The street segment is extremely difficult to develop around and keep maintained. And Warner Pacific University petitioner surrounds the street remnant with its campus. This is showing an aerial view looking north. The Southeast Corether Street is shaded in orange. This is a street view looking east along the unpaved street right of way. This is just a high level view of the surrounding neighborhood. It's within the Mount Tabor neighborhood and the Southeast Division Mixed Use Corridor within Southeast Portland. Surrounding the proposed vacation area is university, residential, and commercial uses. So this is just a slide of the bike network in the area. The existing conditions show the major bike way through the Mount Tabor Park and city bikeways through the Southeast 64th, Southeast Division, Southeast 71st, and Southeast 72nd Streets. As you can see, there is no bike connection to Mount Tabor along Southeast 66th Avenue, Southeast 70th, and no through connection through Southeast Corether Street. Bikes can access Mount Tabor, however, at Southeast 68th, but this is only considered a local service route. Normally, in a mixed use area and with Southeast 66th Avenue exceeding the 530 feet north of Southeast Division threshold, this would require bike connection. However, in this case, there would be no meaningful connection to the bike network. In addition, the TriMet stop is along Southeast Division Street between Southeast 66th and Southeast 68th Avenue for bikes to connect to. Next slide shows the pedestrian network. The existing conditions show the major city walkway along Southeast Division. A city walkway exists along Southeast 60th Avenue and Southeast 71st Avenue. The neighborhood walkways run through Mount Tabor Park, Southeast 64th, Southeast 67th, and Southeast 72nd Avenue. As you can see, again, there's no pedestrian connection to Mount Tabor along Southeast 66th Avenue, Southeast 70th Avenue, and no through connection along Southeast Corether Street. Pedestrians can access Mount Tabor Park at 68th Avenue. However, again, this is only considered a local street. Again, normally in a mixed use area and with 66th Avenue exceeding 530 feet north of Southeast Division, this would require pedestrian connection. However, in this case, there's no meaningful connection to the pedestrian network. And again, the TriMet Transit Stop is along Southeast Division between 66th Avenue and 68th Avenue. In conclusion, vacating Southeast Corether's will not disrupt bike or pedestrian circulation as the major bike and pedestrian networks do not connect in with the street segments. So as with any street conditions, there's conditions of approval. The first comes from PBOT Development Review and Permit Engineering. The petitioner is required to connect curbs and establish an 11-foot wide pedestrian corridor with sidewalks along the Southeast 66th Avenue under a minor development permit. And as you can see in red, there's a staircase that might need to be redesigned with a new sidewalk through this area. Again, these improvements help with the pedestrian circulation down Southeast 66th Avenue to the major Southeast Division Corridor. PBOT Right-of-Way Management is conditioning the petitioner to require install ADA ramps at each corner of Southeast Division Street and Southeast 66th Avenue. Again, these ADA ramps will help with pedestrian connections through this major corridor. The next one comes from PBOT Right-of-Way Management. The petitioner is required to add a new sidewalk segment along Southeast Division Street between Southeast 68th and Southeast 69th Avenues where grass currently exists within the public right of way. I just want to note, too, the tree right here is within private property. However, we're recommending to the petitioner to move that tree back five to 10 feet because of the future roots will mature and potentially break up the sidewalk in this area. And they've agreed verbally to do that as well. BES Bureau of Vinyl Services is requiring to the petitioner to provide adequate private easement for the existing sanitary sewer lateral, which is within the street vacation area, which serves 2219 Southeast 68th Avenue. And finally, Portland General Electric has a pole and street light in here, in the street vacation area. The petitioner is required to provide an overhead electrical and pole line easement to PGE for the overhead and pole that connects to streetlight poles within 66th Avenue. And again, lastly, again, just want to reiterate, the Commission's actions here is a requested action from the Plank Commission to recommend approval of the street vacation with conditions to the City Council. I yield my time back to Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation and overview. We now have public testimony, and we have two people signed up, Peter Finley-Frye and Douglas Wade. I believe Douglas is potentially online. Is that right, Julie? Okay. Welcome, Peter Finley-Frye. You have three minutes. And please do state your name for the record.
My name is Peter Finley-Frye, and I'd like Douglas Wade to begin.
Your mic is not on, I don't think, or move it closer to you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. My name is Peter Finley-Frye. I'd like Douglas Wade to speak quickly first. He is the Chief Financial Officer of Warner Pacific University.
Okay.
And then I'd like to have two and a half minutes.
Sure. Or we can give you each three if he would like to go first.
You don't need that much. But thank you.
Okay, so go ahead, Douglas.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us about this request. I'm Doug Wade. I'm the CFO, Executive Vice President for the university. And yeah, this is an important request so that we can better serve our students here at the university. The area that we're, that's an issue here is it abuts next to some administrative buildings and is across the street from some of our residence halls. And so having it become part of the university property would advance the university's mission and allow for students to use it at their pleasure. So with that, I'll just turn back the microphone to Peter to elaborate more.
Thank you. And he'll be here for questions if it's necessary. So Peter Finley-Frye, planning consultant for Warner Pacific University. We obviously support the vacation and for the very reasons Steph mentioned. I do want to mention that in the slideshow, you saw the ADA ramps on Division. If that's what I build, I'm going to build it in New York Second. But if you look at it carefully, you'll see a huge fir tree right behind it, which means that I can't just put an ADA, you know, plastic thing there. I have to, it's complicated. I just wanted you to know that it's going to be complicated. The reason I'm testifying is because I am submitting a letter to you. We are a faith-based university. We attract students from throughout the world. We are challenged by your zoning code because the Portland Institutional Zoning Code has a long and complex legislative history that resulted in Table 150-1. And we are CI-1 instead of CI-2. CI-1 prohibits residential office and retail use. CI-2 allows it. We filed for pre-app, two pre-apps. We spent an outrageous amount of money. We don't want the FAR, the height that provides by the CI-2. All we want is flexibility to be able to utilize our property in partnership with community-based organizations. They've already contacted us to take our dormitories and make them into student housing with mixed housing, but we are prohibited from that because of your code. So we are here, and I identified in my letter who we are with. University of Oregon Concordia, Lynnfield, Multnomah, all these universities are prohibited from community partnerships of ownership because of your zoning code. And we're asking you to look at the language in your zoning code to consider releasing us from that prohibition. We don't need the FAR. We don't need the height. We just want to have partnerships. So, and you're the one who can do it. Only you or the City Council. So we're going to redo this, but I thought it would be better to start with you. So please look at my letter, and I don't know what to do next. Maybe I'll come back next month and ask you how you feel. But that's not mine.
Thank you for your testimony. And that concludes testimony for this item. Correct, Julie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? For PBOT regarding this vacation request? Go ahead, Commissioner Ames.
Yeah, Commissioner Ames, for the record, is the requirements on the, I know we talked about the tactile domes and the ADA at the corner. I mean, all that has to happen. There's no, yeah.
That's correct. Yeah. And that would be under a Public Works permit.
Got it.
Yep. Yep. The sidewalk work can be under a minor improvement permit, but the ADA work has to be under a Public Works permit per the latest changes from PBOT.
And that's a, that's a condition. Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Okay. And in case I didn't say it, the testimony is now closed for both verbal and written on this item. So we can go ahead and advance to a vote. Julie, please call the roll. Oh, motion first. Thank you.
Commissioner Ralph, I would like to motion to approve the street vacation.
Thank you, Commissioner Ralph. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Pounceel, a second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pounceel. Any discussion? Okay, and now for the roll call. Thank you, Julie. Alexander?
Aye.
Ames?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Pounceel?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Noemera? Aye. The vacation request is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we are moving on to the next, we have two items related to TIF today. The first is the East Portland Tax Increment Financing District, which is a work session and a recommendation. So I will invite up Prosper and Portland Housing various staff and please, and BPS, please go ahead and introduce yourselves as you are settled. Are there any disclosures from Planning Commissioners on the East Portland Tax Increment Financing District item? Commissioner Ralph?
I live right near the 82nd Avenue TIF.
Okay, thank you. Any additional disclosures?
I'm in RGA and have participated in some of the meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Lang. Okay, and with that, I'll, oh, another.
I am near the, one of the TIF districts as well, not within it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. With that, we will welcome you all to introduce yourselves and hand it over for your presentation.
Commissioners, Patricia Deefenover for the record. I don't believe that staff have a presentation today. I think we, over the course of the last two meetings, I think we were answered a lot of your questions. And so we're really here to see if you have any final questions and then really, you know, get ready for that vote.
Sure. Why don't we go ahead and welcome staff to introduce themselves, and then I will open it up to Commissioners to any additional questions regarding the East Portland TIF.
Ryan Singer, Principal Planner, BPS.
Jessie Connor, She-Her Pronouns, Senior Policy Analyst of Bureau, Housing Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chabrie Vickers. I use She-Her Pronouns, and I serve as the Director of the Equity Policy and Communications Department at Prosper Portland.
Hello. Is this on?
Nope.
We're good. Now, nope. Now we're. Now, no.
That's on. There it is. Thank you. Catherine Artinger, She-Her Pronouns. I'm a project manager with Prosper Portland.
And can I offer, we have a, just a quick recap presentation if that's helpful. I know we've come and brought a lot of information, so it's a really kind of truncated version.
Yeah, I think Commissioners would welcome that.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, 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 it's okay. We just wanted to be as prepared as you all might need. So I think we are sharing it via Zoom.
I am attempting to share it. Come on.
It will, okay. Awesome. So, good afternoon. Again, I'm Chabrie Vickers, and we're joined here, as mentioned. And so we have a really short, kind of brief overview of what we've brought you in the past, just to remind you of what we have and to get any questions that you might have. Go to the next slide. And so as Lisa Abouaf, our Director of Development and Investment, brought to you before, the overall status of the TIF districts is important just to remember as we consider what's coming up next. So when we think about those TIF districts that will remain active, we of course count North McAdam, Gateway, and Cully, our newest TIF district. And as we look through the sunsetting process, we see our Central East Side Interstate, Willamette, and Lentz, TIF districts. and Lentz, TIF districts. And of course, those that are terminated, especially our four NPNs, many of the older TIF districts that folks remember Downtown Waterfront, South Parks, South Park Block, excuse me, Airport Way, OCC, and our two Cully NPIs that made space for the new one. And what we are considering, as you know, are the brand-new six proposed TIF districts, those on, in East Portland, 82nd Avenue, east of 205, and what we call SPACE for Sumner Parkway, Argay, Columbia Corridor, thank you, it's the longest one. SPACE is better than SPAC, though. And then, of course, in Central, Central City, we have our Lloyd Holiday, our Central East Side Corridor and West Side TIF districts that we're proposing. And so this really helps you understand kind of over the lifetime of these TIF districts where we're at and the next generation of TIF districts that we have an opportunity to consider today. Next slide. I think one of the things that we've heard, not only from you all and your questions and that we've heard from community, really is, I think, a pride point for me and in coming to Prosper over the past two years, the work that the team has been doing for many years, especially around community engagement and the co-creation process around TIF, is I think one of the major differences. You see here, and we've shared with you before, the over 95 steering committee and working group members, well over 65 committee meetings that have occurred from the summer of '23 until just this recent summer of 2024, tons of video views and survey responses, our fantastic outreach partners you all heard from, from Paula and just the city, open, city-led open houses, the parties and the list members. And I think what you get through all of this is what truly the co-creation model has brought us. So, community members who actually helped in deciding where the borders of the TIF districts are, committee members who shared with us what was important and not just envisioning. You heard folks say before, we've given you many visions, it's important for you to respond to what those are. And so hopefully you see that reflected in some of the pieces that we'll share again from here. But what this brings us to is a process that has really been built off of a lot of the work that happened in Cully. I think because of that, the four years of extensive co-creation process, what you have here was a group of folks who were brought together in incredibly intentional way to really understand what community was looking for, ask the right questions and consider those needs, and then present those both to you all and to the staff. And so we'll go to the next slide here that really gives you insight on East Portland. I'm going to hand this over to Catherine to share more.
Thank you, Chabrie. And I've got my mic down this time. Yeah, so just kind of a quick refresh, we're doing this a little bit backwards because East Portland was the last presentation you saw. It's been a little bit longer since Central City, it's been almost a month since that original presentation. So we're kind of working backwards. So we're starting with East Portland and then we have a quick recap of Central City as well. But this is just kind of a quick recap of the advisory body process, not necessarily the engagement process, this is part of it. But on the left side, you have the East Portland Wide Steering Committee that really kind of helped set the guidelines for working group work and also really helped guide engagement. And then on the right side, you have the three different working groups for the three different districts. Little notes on here, the little school cap, does, is a, it's a school person, it's shocking. So, you know, on the steering committee, we had Jessica, who was with Multnomah Educational Service District on 82nd. We were working closely with PPS and East 205. David Douglas and Ann Parkrose, we were working with Parkrose School District as well. So just a quick recap of that. These are the three districts that we are talking about. The guidance that we received from city council almost a year ago for the resolution was that we had $6 billion of assessed value and 7,500 acres to create as many as three districts. So that's where we started. You know, that process started in the steering committee with kind of broad areas and then the working groups initially were, they were intended to tailor those down and they ended up adding a bunch of stuff, too. So these boundaries really represent a lot of discussion with community and with working groups. And this really just shows that we stayed under those caps that were set out for us by city council. This is really kind of looking at some of the project list, which lives in the plan and the types of projects that could be done with TIF dollars over the life of the district. So there's an economic and urban development pot, an infrastructure pot, and an affordable housing pot. We've spoken previously about the city's affordable housing set aside policy sets a 45 minimum for affordable housing across all TIF districts, and all three of these districts opted to actually say in their plan that they are at 45% minimum. And so roughly what you'll see here is kind of equal buckets of money for economic development and housing, and then a little bit of money set aside for infrastructure. And just as a refresh there, the rationale there is that, you know, East Portland is desperate for infrastructure. We heard a lot about underinvestment for decades. And so this is not to reflect that folks do not care about sidewalks, it is to reflect that they want the city to invest in those sidewalks separate from this pot of money. Yeah, so that's kind of how the different working groups have allocated their budget across those three buckets of funds. Yeah, Steph, oh, sorry, Commissioner Ralph. Sorry.
Miss Hardinger. Just a question around 82nd, the 82nd Avenue, the, thank you, sorry, that's what I get for being four minutes late. There's a different toggle between economic and urban development and infrastructure between 82nd Avenue and the other two, and I'm curious, especially with the investments coming in from the state and federal, what, what the, if you could distill what some of those.
Yeah, so I think a lot of it is actually connected to that investment that's coming and just a concern on where it's going to stop in terms of reaching out from the actual corridor. And so they wanted a little bit of extra money in that bucket so that they could continue some of those connections out and support some of the businesses and local access to those businesses. It was a very specific kind of views that they were looking at.
I think I'll also just add, Catherine, and recognizing all the work that's been happening on 82nd for goodness, a long, long time, the community also wanting to ensure that we were able to leverage those dollars in ways that, that TIF couldn't and not asking for TIF to do more than it should with other areas and other dollars coming in. So really attempting to use TIF in the smartest way next to these other resources that we've seen been engaging in the area. So really, I think, concerted effort by community to say, let's leverage the dollars in the most feasible way for 82nd Avenue, which again seems directly aligned with a lot of the work that I've seen you doing in past roles. So thank you for your question.
Yeah, can I ask one?
Yeah.
More? It's so wonderful to see you. And from that work, because you have been involved in the Jade District since its inception, and I'm curious, I should know this and I don't feel I have a deep understanding of the, the compare and contrast relationship between the TIF program and Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative. So could you, like, just share, because Jade District and others are going offline, what is substantively different?
Do you want to go?
Go ahead.
So we have this issue in Cully, too, right? There were two NPNs in Cully. There was the Cully Boulevard Alliance and our 42nd Avenue. They still exist in Cully even with the TIF district and we continue to work closely with them. One of the things that is really helpful is they can help us partner to identify businesses that might be eligible for funds moving forward. And so we definitely want to keep that kind of network and capacity alive and well. I see the same thing kind of happening in East Portland. We worked with each of the NPNs, the four NPNs in the three districts throughout this process. Yeah, they will, they will continue to live. I think over time, there is a bit of a funding question, but for now, that is, they're going to exist and keep moving forward and we'll be partnering with them to help connect people to resources.
So from a taxable standpoint, they, they will be terminated, as you saw, and be able to really engage, I think, as a, as another point of, like, a node of community engagement. And so I think just to some of the Eco Northwest work we did in looking at TIF districts, especially post the pandemic, recognizing that those areas that had NPNs and that really kind of saturated, robust community engagement fared much better because there was so much connection between businesses and residents. And so we recognize those certainly as strengths and want to continue that and recognize that they'll be able to help as we consider what the investment from the proposed TIF district could consider.
Thank you.
Yep. So next slide. We're going to hop to Central City and we also have Sarah here, if you'd like to.
I'll sit here. I don't care.
She can sit.
Good afternoon, I'm Sarah Harple. I'm a senior project manager at Prosper Portland and I led the Central City component of our exploration process. So I'm going to run through, I think I have three slides, just to recap our process. First, you see our steering committee members here kind of organized by areas of expertise and perspective that they brought to the table. So working with our public partners, our nonprofit community partners, affordable housing developers, and economic development partners, including anchor employers, landlords, and small businesses who also participated. This committee met over, I think, from October 2023 until August 2024, both as a full committee and then also in a series of meetings and subcommittees focused on housing production, business recruitment and retention, and then unlocking large-scale development opportunities, which is kind of a unique aspect of the Central City exploration process as well. The three proposed TIF districts in the Central City are the West Side TIF District, which makes up most of the downtown and Old Town Chinatown. We had conversations around the relationship and kind of shared and unique goals around the West Side. And ultimately, the committee recommended that that move forward as a singular district. The Lloyd Holiday District, which is anchored by several large-scale development opportunities, the Lloyd Mall, Portland Bottling, but also small businesses around the Broadway and Wylder Cuplet. And then the Central East Side Corridor, TIF District, we had a corridor to designate that we are also retaining and shrinking our former Central East Side Corridor to serve some of the areas you don't see shown here on the map, so we continue to have some resources in that, in that area. But the corridor, new TIF district is grounded by the OMSI Master Plan Development Site, as well as commercial opportunities and housing opportunities along the Mbleke Corridor and Stark Avenue. You also see, we, I think has been noted, the donut holes in the West Side, so we did have very strategic conversations around certain properties that needed to be removed to stay under our assessed value cap. So in the East Portland Exploration Process, I think acreage, acreage was a large constraint and the Central City assessed value becomes really your guiding strength metric. And so removing properties that were Class A office, newly developed, or didn't offer ground floor, small business opportunities. This gives you kind of an overview of the capacity of the three districts moving forward over the next 30 years, divided between economic development, infrastructure, and affordable housing. Consistent with East Portland, we continue to have affordable housing at 45%, subject to a review of that existing policy. We do have a higher proportion invested in infrastructure in the West Side, or in the Central City. Part of this due, each of these three districts are grounded by some of those large-scale development opportunities that really do need significant infrastructure investment in order to unlock the other opportunities you see in this district, particularly housing development, whether that's in the Broadway Corridor, Lloyd Mall, OMSI, et cetera.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Commissioner Ralph, for the record. Related to the economic and urban development, particularly when we're talking about commercial renovations, seismic and new development, are, we've heard a lot about office-to-housing conversion. Does any of that fit here?
It does show up here. I think the last word under the last bullet of economic development, so looking at both middle-income housing, particularly also with conversion opportunities. We do know that the investment needed for conversion out is significantly larger than the amount of resources we will have available within TIF districts, so it can be one tool used for conversion, but it can't be the only tool to make those successful.
Absolutely. And I'll just offer, I mean, I think as we consider the work that we do with the city and our partners at the state level and federal, we, this is a part of what that looks like. And so the city really being able to come to the table with dollars to aid in that conversation and that request that we continue to hear. So definitely an option and not the only tool. So we'll come here to potential outcomes and then I'm going to ask Jessie to really kind of hone in on our affordable housing. Jessie?
Yeah, thanks, Chabrie. So again, Jessie Connor, the Portland Housing Bureau. So this slide is intended to capture sort of all of the districts collectively with each of the six districts electing the minimum 45% set aside rate. We're looking at a total of 1.1 billion over the next 30 years to invest in affordable housing in these six districts, about 643 in East Portland and almost 540 in the Central City area. You'll hear, as you heard through the presentations, each part of town has a little bit different prioritization of the affordable housing options they're looking for, a lot of new construction and preservation more focused in the Central City areas, and then a suite of homeownership, critical home repair, in addition to new construction in the East Side.
Yeah, thank you. And I think as we look over all of the six district, TIF districts, excuse me, as Jessie mentioned, economic and urban development continue to be a major goal there. And a lot of what we, we've already discussed a bit today, I think the overall piece that we're really honing in on is, again, over a billion dollars available to support our small businesses and we anticipate between 1,600 to 2,400, small businesses will likely be able to receive services, and then 20 to $35,000, or, excuse me, 1,000 jobs supported, not $1,000. And really, truly looking at that middle-income rental housing for us, I think is of particular importance at Prosper, recognizing that with our partners at PHB, we can look across the suite of what's needed in our city and that missing middle housing is absolutely a part of that. And so we're excited to, to be able to look at different options for that and different products within our team as well and make certain that we can support developers doing that work. And then I think one of the things that we're really proud of, looking at this potential outcome of the proposed districts, are the $384 million infrastructures, opportunities that could come available. And you see just some of those things noted, the regional and local community-serving infrastructure, but really looking at waterfront park, the green loop, and sidewalk and safety improvements that community has been asking for, especially those in East Portland. This gets us to really responding to a lot of the community voice around there being destination and places for, for folks to choose to gather back downtown as well, recognizing that downtown continues to be an employer hub for us. And while East Portland is where we see a lot of our residents, that the two are definitely balanced together and that the work of all six proposed TIF districts, as what you see evidenced here, is truly a part of the revitalization across the board. And so we're excited about the opportunity of these outcomes with these six proposed TIF districts. I think this might be the last slide. Oh, and finally, the timeline. So we're here with you all today on October 8th. Okay, we made it. And our goal, as you heard Director Difindor mention, the 23rd and the 30th are when we'll go to city council for a hearing and vote. And then we'll work into, if, if approved, we'll work into the budgeting process and the TIF district would start July 1st of next year. And then we'll move into convening our CLC, our community leadership committees, and getting community members on those, engaging with other staff and technical support groups who can be there alongside the community to answer questions as it relates to kind of the interplay across, and then really moving into the action planning process. And that action planning process is really where you start to look at what the next five years really look like from an investment standpoint. I will offer, we all know, TIF is increment. The first five years is very, very small increments. So really, this is where we're getting and establishing that co-created CLC, excuse me, Community Leadership Committee model, and really establishing, how do we take these TIF plans and move them forward into what we hope to see as, as these investment, investments become available with the increment starting. So we would love to answer any questions you might have now, but hopefully that was a good recap on some of what we've brought to you in the most recent meetings.
Yes, thank you so much for that recap. I think we all really appreciated it. And since you blended your presentations, I do need to ask for disclosures on the Central City, so I'll kick us off. I did serve on the Advisory Committee for the Central City TIF with the Affordable Housing Work Group, representing Central City Concern, and I believe Commissioner Ling has a disclosure regarding Central City as well.
Correct. I, I serve on two community organization boards within Lloyd and have discussed the TIF at both of those.
Great. Commissioner Ames, did you?
Yeah, I own a commercial property in the Central East Side TIF District.
Great. Any other disclosures for Central City? Okay, so open it up for additional questions from commissioners for East Portland TIF and Central City TIF. Commissioner Ling.
Yeah, Wade Ling, for the record. This is just for my own edification. You showed some of the TIFs going back to old urban renewal areas. some of the TIFs going back to old urban renewal areas going back in the 70s and 80s. Did it follow the same process going through Planning Commission to City Council? Or was there a different process in place in that time? And also, the impacts of those areas, looking back now over that, would, would there be anything that was a missed opportunity through that? Or was it all very successful? Or was it a mixed bag of things? I'm just kind of, some historic perspective on, on those first ones.
Yeah, I would say huge appreciation to our partners at EcoTrust, who helped us do a full report on the past 20 years. So I don't know, it won't go all the way back to the 70s. And unfortunately, I wasn't here during that time, and I can't remember how, like if it would have gone to Planning Commission?
I think I can speak to that. Can't confirm this 100%. Patricia Diffendorf for the record, but the requirement is in the Oregon statute that Planning Commission has the role of ensure, you know, making a finding that the TIF District plans are consistent with a comprehensive plan. I suspect that some version of that was there all along. It's, it's kind of consistent. In my experience in California, I saw there's parallels in terms of timing. State law established this possibility of, of urban renewal districts. And this process is very similar in that it goes back quite a long way. So I suspect that it was probably the same process, more or less. But I do believe that the engagement that the teams do now is really much more robust.
Absolutely. So that's, that's almost 180-degree difference. And I would say probably one of the reasons you see me here today. So I, as kind of a younger community activist, was, was very much kind of at the other side of the table from then Portland Development Commission saying you need to do better, and, and many different community groups who gather saying, you can't do some of the same harm that has occurred, and you need to engage community from the beginning. And so I would say that to agree is essentially the 180-degree difference. So co-creation model of TIF districts is absolutely different than what was just deemed a blighted neighborhood. And then let's just put TIF there. And oh, by the way, now we have a match for the federal dollars that can come in and put in the yellow line. 100% different. I think if you ask, did TIF do its job? There are, you know, a ton of different ways to answer that. And I think different ways that folks would have considered that in the 70s, in the 80s, in the 90s. But we can certainly make certain that your team has that TIF report, which really speaks to the overall investment and what it looked like to be able to increase property taxes. It also includes insight on some of the policy differences and changes that city council and others were able to bring in. And at the state level as well, to recognize some of the harm that had happened from TIF and how that has shifted now. And I think the most important thing to recognize is TIF is a financing tool. And the folks who make the decisions on how you use it and the way that you involve community is how the impact can absolutely dramatically shift. And so, you know, as we think about the engagement, we talked about there's engagement as you set up a TIF District, but truly there's 30 years of work to move through what that increment even, you know, has the opportunity to talk through. And so developing those relationships now and many that have been developed from far, far before just this past engagement, I think is what community recognizes as different, which is one of the reasons you don't see so much community saying, don't do this, because they've been at the table with us. And in fact, in East Portland, it was in response to them saying, please come do this because there's investment that's needed. And we recognize that this is how the city does that work. And so I would say it's kind of, it's shifted holistically the way that we consider the Community Leadership Committee work and what's been put into the plans that really offers, if the city and the community aren't aligned, kind of there's an actual process to get through that and kind of really take it directly to, to city council as well. So it's, it's absolutely different. And, and as I started this, it's one of the reasons why I'm here. As someone who used to tell Prosper and PDC you need to do different, I'm, I'm here to help the agency and our, my colleagues continue to do that differently by showing up and doing that co-creation model and building those relationships that can last over the generation of these proposed TIF districts. Yeah, thank you for the question.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yeah, I, I wanted to, I wanted to just sort of acknowledge a few things. You know, I was involved in some discussions with Prosper around potential development of a, a TIF in, in Albana. And, you know, it's one of those scenarios where I think you're, you're in violent agreement. And I think the, the, the community leadership structure, the pace, the structure, the foundation of that was one that we would like to see evolve, you know, over time. But what I really want to speak to is the fidelity that Prosper brought to this engagement with local groups. I mean, it was clearly, we've lived through racial reckoning. And, you know, I think people have heard a lot, but have they learned a lot? You know, and I think it's one thing to listen, it's another to learn. And I think we have been, you know, clearly impressed that we are working with a partner now who is looking to have this path informed by community. It may not be a mirror image in terms of each of the streams, but the intentionality is very different. So I do want to acknowledge and applaud that, you know. And at times, it will help define how we're frenemies, but it's going to advance how we move forward as a larger community. So I do want to acknowledge that.
Commissioner Alexander, I appreciate that. And I think that this is definitely an invitation to continue to work with community in, in building trust, right? It hasn't been totally built, but I think we've worked and the team has worked really hard in building that back and individual relationships and just continuing to show up. And I think as the community continues to show up, we are there to listen. And I mean, I think down to the, the literal boundaries of how this was written, right? That was decided by community. And community also had the ability to go in and redline the plans. We don't like this, this is what we like. That's very different compared to, by the way, there's a TIF District in your neighborhood and, oh, this, you know, transportation investment is coming in. And so get ready and doing community engagement after. It's, it's very different. I honor the work that the team had been doing for much longer than I've been here at Prosper and am excited to continue doing the work alongside leaders like yourself and making certain that Portland is, is moving towards our preferred future collectively. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't start by saying Mike Ali.
I'm looking at Erica. You're good? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I was just going to follow up as a comment. As a board member of the Old Town Community Association, I have experience with the existing TIF districts and would just attest to that community engagement process in TIF districts that are about to expire. And, you know, the community organization has informed a five-year action plan that has been renewed and renewed and renewed again. It's a very active dialogue, right? Down to specific sites and plans. And, you know, we don't always agree, and that's the frenemy, right? That's the like, but we all respect each other and there's an avenue for communication and there's response. And I think that's really good community planning is to have that dynamic, right? Where there, there's always that path towards expressing, hey, we've got questions, we've got concerns, let's revisit, let's convene. And so I see it as really a functional example of how with the future TIFs, that governance and community will, will continue. So not, yeah, Commissioner Ralph, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I will always have questions for days. Sorry. A question that is within the scope of our work and a question that is out of scope. I'll start with the in-scope. We had talked a little bit about in the space TIF District about the sandlot. And you'd mentioned that there was, there was other, I'm front-loading this as something that I think likely I would want in our transmittal letter. I'm curious, what, what is the process to bring the sandlot into, into the TIF District boundaries?
So if there's, the first part is very clear, the second part is a little bit less clear. So the first part is that it would need, there would need to be a land division. It would need to be cut off from the state right-of-way that the highway is on. And so when that is separated, it is automatically within the boundary that the land use description, so the land use description that's part of the plan does the outline, and then it cuts out the holes. And so currently, that right-of-way is a hole, but now it's cut off from that. And so it's no longer a hole, it's part of the thing. And so in terms of that piece, it's automatically in. I think the part we need to figure out is then it's additional acreage, right? And so we would need to update our numbers and kind of what that process is, is still a little bit murky right now. But I think the intent is that if and when ODOT kind of cedes that lands, that it would absolutely, we would like to reclaim it for community. Yeah.
The community would too. Is that, is that an act of conversation, to the best of your understanding?
We have had conversations with ODOT about it. So they are aware. I don't know that they have any intent right now. And it's in a weird space right now because community is using it, right?
Yeah.
And so I think there's probably some ongoing conversations. There's probably some, you know, ongoing advocacy once we have a CLC set up to kind of help move that through. But.
I'll also say, just as we look at the boundary changes, so our board can look at those changes if they're under, 1% or under. And if they're over that, then we go to city council. And I, I think that's just important, recognizing that we've heard some testimony about folks who want particular pieces kind of added in. I think that which we heard public testimony on before, we recognize just the, the assessed value on that would literally knock out all of Lloyd and Central East Side TIF districts as they're currently being proposed, just based upon the assessed value. And so, you know, we just spoke so much about the co-creation model and the community really saying, these are the boundaries that work for us. We would hate to shift that at the last minute now, just to say one person asked. But we would like, you know, with our city council partners are really talking about asking them to consider a resolution to have that go through the standard process, which is bringing it to the city, excuse me, the CLCs, the community leadership committees. So we can literally talk about what it means to include any of these new pieces in, because it wasn't just that one that you all heard some testimony on. There are a list of different ones that could be included or not, and how that shifts or takes us outside of the original resolution that the city moved us forward with. And so we don't want to shift and totally pull back from the co-creation model. We'd like to lean into that. And so what we're saying is, you know, allow us to do that work alongside community and have them really consider what those extra pieces might be. And so exactly to what Catherine mentioned, really working with our community to determine, this was a little bit different, but to determine what makes sense in each of those districts and what we could include.
Yeah. And this one's really different because it's like just parks. Like there's a lot of stuff that needs to be figured out. But yeah, as soon as ODOT is willing to cede that, there's, we can move forward with some conversations.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, sorry, Commissioner Ralph for the record. Question, the out-of-scope question. And I heard Commissioner Ames ask this a couple of sessions ago, but related to the 25% cut of Prosper. I just, going to be the jerk, but I feel we need to ask. Because TIF, to the best of my understanding, it's sticks and bricks, right? It doesn't allow social infrastructure or like social capacity for community-based organizations. And so just like, there is a power dynamic there of, you know, funding for administration and oversight of Prosper that therefore does not go to community-based organization. I'm, I'm curious what the, you know, is, is 25% a hard amount? Is there an amount that can go to pass through? Like, I'm, I'm just curious what that.
Sorry. We have Tony here as well. But thank you, Jesse, just mentioned this, also PHB. And so I, I will say it kind of shifts over time. And Tony, you want to give some more insight?
Sure. There we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tony Barnes, CFO with Prosper Portland. Yes, it, it shifts over time. It depends on a lot of different factors. When we're looking back at it historically, it kind of falls into three different buckets, relatively in thirds. One third for general administration and overhead, one third for like facilities, materials and services, another third for direct personnel that are in the field, working on projects and programs. And I think those ratios change over time depending on the complexity of the projects and programs and specific TIF districts as well. I think there's cases where some districts have sometimes higher rates, sometimes much lower rates. And it's relative to the amount of capital going out in any one fiscal year too. But on average, what we've seen is, I think combined, looking back for the last 20, 24 years, is an average of closer to 20 to 22% for PHB and Prosper combined for the implementation of all projects and programs. So that includes staffing costs in the field, project management, but also back office functions as well, underwriting, loan closing, things like that.
I also think it just speaks to some of the conversations we had about what that community engagement looks like. So to do that well, right? You have, you have to have someone who's doing it. If you just kind of step back and say, by the way, this is happening, it's much lighter, you know, amount of what that could look like. There's still always going to be costs to exactly what Tony just mentioned. And absolutely, the life cycle of the TIF District shifts when, you know, when that is early on, you're really building that, that Community Leadership Committee and really kind of setting those parameters that you've written into the TIF plan. And then it kind of shifts over time based upon when you have projects that really set up and what that looks like. As the TIF districts can move into defeasance, you know, there's different need there as well. And so really, it kind of shifts. And I will say, as Portland continues to lean into this co-creation model, co-creation does require someone there to, to be the other to co-create alongside. And so there are different models of doing it. There are different ways that you heard people doing it. And I think there was someone recently at a community event talking about TIF. And they oftentimes talk about TIF as the big giant monster, especially if you look at other cities and how it may be administered. And when they talked to us about some of the ways that we do it and some of the different things that are present in our process, I think they kind of stood back and said, wow, you do that? And that's how that occurs? And huh, that's interesting. And that's very different. And I will say that's because of the people that you see sitting here who do the work every day. And then teams like Tony's who make certain that we can be good stewards of, of what these resources look like.
I also just want to, oh, sorry. I just want to offer too, much like Polly, again, in East Portland, there was a desire for community-based staff people over time. So that is some of that. So it's sticks and bricks. It can be used for kind of planning stuff as long as it is directly tied to TIF. So it can't be like general engagement. But if it's, you know, to seek stuff to put into an action plan or to connect people to resources, those sorts of things are okay. And so I think we're, we have, you know, plans for, you know, new community-based staff people to really help with that. And they would be funded out of the same admin budget. I think the other piece that Shabri was getting to around engagement and like what that looks like, what that just looked like in East Portland in the exploration, as we were funding organizations to do engagement in their respective communities and we were supporting that. So I could see that going on as well. The trade-off, right? Is that it's, it's all TIF funds. And so if we're using it there, we're not using it here. And so that, that tension is very real and something that we're just going to kind of continue to work through all the time.
Great, thank you. I believe that concludes.
I got one more.
Oh, Commissioner Ames.
Commissioner Ames, for the record. So understood on the three buckets. So you've got the community engagement part, super important. We all, that totally check. The other one's financing costs, I think. Is that what the second?
Financing costs for bonds, if bonds are issued. And that depends on the district, are independent or outside that. That could be above and beyond the maximum indebtedness. So if a district has a $500 million maximum indebtedness, the financing costs are often on top of that for interest costs. But any bond reserves or issuance cost of a bond might fall within that 500 million, but not included in the 20 to 25% average. That could be additional. Some of those reserve, bond reserves could also be released and put back into projects after the bonds are paid off.
Okay. So then the third bucket, which is just general administration and overhead for Prosper. So say for some reason this didn't pass, is Prosper, I mean, does Prosper grow when the TIF District goes into place? Or is this to maintain Prosper at the current level for administration and overhead?
It's a great question. There's a shift that occurs. There's a shift of where the emphasis of programming and staffing will be. And so, for example, right now, our budget has about 100 positions. Right now, many of those positions are dedicated to. Right now, many of those positions are dedicated to some of the terminating districts and finishing up projects in those areas. Some of those positions will shift into the new districts once there's capacity in those districts to fund those operations. In some cases, we might have to look at a way to bridge some of those sources as there's a growth, delaying the growth of resources to fund those positions. So we're looking at alternative sources of funding to help bridge that gap in the meantime.
And then does the, what's the oversight of the, that 20 to 25%? What does that look like? I, I just see it as it's any, any increment there that we can squeeze down. We can build more affordable housing. We can improve the infrastructure and wherever it's needed, you know? And so I think it's a really important part, you know, of the whole equation that, you know, I know it's kind of out of the scope of, of sort of what we're looking at. But I think it's really important for, you know, each of these communities that are engaged that know that, you know, they're getting to capture as much of that improvement in the areas where they live as they possibly can.
Yeah, thanks for that question. I think it's, I think it's really part of the annual budget process where we highlight how each TIF district is budgeted towards the action plans and how much of those resources are allocated towards staffing to support those projects or internal administration. So I think that should be an act of conversation as part of that process.
Good.
And I'll say that we've had a community budget committee. And obviously with so many changes at the city, there's, all of those conversations are changing. But we've always had a member from a TIF district who serves on that committee alongside us. So they're able to literally watch as we build that annual plan with us and are there when we make hard decisions about shifting resources or otherwise. I think last year as we looked at taking in the cut that we needed to, we were able to work with folks and literally look at kind of what this means. Do we have positions here to do this or do we shift over in this way? And so the fact that we continue to engage folks on, in that process, which again, I mean, I feel like everything's in transition a little bit now. So I can't promise you much of anything, but know that that's, I'm sorry.
No, don't, again.
That was probably too real. But I, I think what we know is that we've always had the intention of really truly engaging members of the TIF districts who can both kind of take that back to their communities and, and be aware of what's happening so that they are not in the dark of what it means to do this work. And they also recognize the ebb and flow of the life cycle of the TIF district.
Sure. Thank you.
I also just want to add really quickly. Super, first off, super appreciate the question. This is like many of the conversations we had with community members. We were like, no, like just because you trust me doesn't mean you should trust the person who's going to be in the seat 20 years from now. And let's think about all the terrible things that could happen and how we would prevent them. And so along those lines, everything Chabri just said. And in East Portland, it is written into the governance charters that part of the role of city is to pass as much of the funding forward to community as possible. So that expectation is there. And then also written into the charters is that annual report to city council. And so that being in the charter is absolutely game for them to say, Prosper, you're doing a bad job. And so definitely everything is set up to do the right thing on the front end. But if something isn't happening, there's, there have been very intentional kind of checks.
Which I'll say is part of that co-creation model, right? So it's not just like, hopefully it all works out and thank you so much, Cheryl and Mira, around like the friendly piece there. But there are also pieces that we've written in to really be responsive, as responsive to community voice as we can. So thanks for the question, yeah.
Well, this is Vice Chair Council. This is a question, I guess, I'm just wondering how this scenario would, would play out. You know, we've been talking about, you know, affordable housing with TIF. And, you know, I think it's really important that, you know, we, you know, preserve as much of the culture of Portland as much as possible. And, and a lot of that starts from, you know, the bottom up. It starts from, you know, people who are, you know, less wealthy, you know? That's where, you know, the bones of our city, you know, kind of, you know, comes from. But nonetheless, how would TIF, if, if, if a community member wanted to, or community members wanted to create, let's say, a land trust, how would TIF be involved in creating that so that there is a, you know, like you had said, 20 years, you know? We don't know who will be sitting in your seat. But we know that if there's a land trust that's there, that those affordable housing units will be there for people who afford them. They may not make profit off of it, you know, by selling it. But so how, how would that story, how would that scenario work out through, through, through TIF funding?
Jessie Connor with the Housing Bureau. So I'll let my colleagues correct me in case I get this first part wrong. But since we go and go fund sticks and bricks, I am not confident that TIF could be funded to develop a new land trust in the sort of legal framework that would need to go into that. That being said, we do, we do fund land trusts, you know, permanent, what we would consider permanent affordable homeownership currently. We do that primarily, well, one of the ways we do it is through our down payment assistance grants. And more times than not, that's, that's funding partners like Habitat for Humanity or Proud Ground and some other new projects. It would be down payment assistance loans potentially in addition to or in lieu of down payment assistance grants for the, the, the grant subsidizes the unit itself. And then the loan would be for the home buyer to go in and purchase and bring down the purchase price of the property.
I would add that TIF cannot be, we cannot provide TIF to other parties to acquire property. We can acquire property and dispose of property through a competitive process. We can also fund pre-development work and develop, and invest in development itself. So those are avenues by which we could help a land trust, but we cannot itself, and we cannot help it acquire the property initially unless it was through a competitive process where we were offering property.
Thanks for that, appreciate it.
Commissioner Ralph. That's why I paused. Thank you. You saw me coming. Commissioner Ralph, for the record, follow up to Vice Chair Council. So if I'm understanding correctly, community land trust, no. Social housing, yes?
I mean, I, I think the same response applies. We, we can't give this, we can't be, the TIF can't be the startup fund for the entity, for the CLT, for the social housing LLC or what have you. But we can do land banking, for example. TIF could do land banking. And then we could do a competitive process to work with those parcels of land, all the pre-development pieces, the construction, the down payment assistance grants for the loans.
Vice Chair Council again. So if someone has land and came to you and said, hey, TIF, you know? I, I want to, you know, make sure that, you know, seven generations from now, that we got people who can be in the central city, you know, making Portland great and who aren't looking at necessarily building wealth, but building cultural heritage. TIF could be like, if it's your land, we can help you, you know, set that up.
I think, I will speak from the affordable housing perspective. Our process would still be that we would be looking at a competitive process. That we don't tend to just, a lot of people ask us for money. We like to be, have a fair and transparent process that we use when we're dispersing funds. But yes.
And I will say for investments in middle income housing or commercial development through Prosper Portland and distinct from the Portland Housing Bureau, we have loan and grant programs that you can apply for on kind of on a rolling basis. And so different than issuing a single like notice of funding available in a competitive process, you could own a property and come to us for a pre-development grant, pre-development loan or a loan for your construction of either housing or commercial development or investing in kind of rehabilitation of existing spaces.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Twofer.
Wait, Lang, for the record, on, on the, so if Prosper acquires some property within a TIF, is there a requirement for how long you can hold that before you have to try and, before you have to get rid of it?
We, I, I hesitate to speak for our legal counsel. I do not believe that there is a certain date written to code or to law. We do have an obligation to use property for redevelopment. So you'll recently have seen in the headlines, we sold Centennial Mills. And with that property, we have a 10-year requirement for development to occur on that property that is recorded against the land and then has certain recourse actions. So we do have some, we do put in obligations in place within our contracts. It's not an open-ended opportunity. That is a rare example where we were at the end of a TIF district, did not have additional resources to invest. And so really we're disposing of property without kind of direct investment. Often we are also, I'll use as a different example, the post office property where we are seeking to sell property and we are actively engaging with developers in their development proposal, investment in that proposal. So it's less of a, you know, 10-year string, but more of an active engagement in a parcel.
And for PHB, it becomes a little expensive for us to just hold land for a long period of time. So we usually try to turn that around into an RFP.
So 30 years out, as you, as it starts to sunset, if you are still holding land, do you try and, and, you know, time it with that 30-year? Or does, does it carry past that?
It can carry, and it can carry past it. So we will continue to hold assets in some of the districts that have closed that may then roll into becoming assets in new districts, which we will continue to work for in redevelopment. So we own a number of properties in Old Town that were in expiring districts. They will now be assets moving forward that we will work to invest in and continue to work on redevelopment within the new West Side District.
And, and you stay within the context of how that TIF was originally defined as far as what you're trying to accomplish within that area? And, and the percentage of housing and stuff, you're still looking at that even as it is expired?
So I'll also offer, when we think about the question around our financial sustainability, right? It really is important to us that the, the benefit go back to Portland. And so has, how we think about it in relationship to the entire financial piece. And, and Tony, please, please jump up here if there's anything that I'm missing, is that it should hopefully align with the original goals or at least still be written into our financial sustainability plan to continue to benefit Portlanders by the way of, of the work that we do here at the agency. So I, you know, I think of a piece of land that we've owned since forever and it was purchased to do development on and it ended up not being like a triangle. I think of a triangle that we recently talked about that just didn't become available based upon how you could even access it. And so being able to dispose of that and it still bring in resource is ideal. And so, and I think it was purchased 20 years back? Yeah. 20, and it was like a random piece of triangle that could have added to and it just wasn't a part of what ended up being developed. And so, yeah, there, there are instances like that, but they're all written into how we consider our overall financial sustainability plan for the agency and how that rolls through collectively. Yeah.
Okay. I think we can proceed to vote and just want to talk through procedurally because we do have to have a separate motion and vote for each of the six TIF sub-districts. So this will be a bit of a process to go ahead and do that. So that means that we will require motions. So what I will do is go ahead and ask for a motion and a second for each of the six sub-districts. And then we will do roll call for approval of those. So starting with the East Portland Tax Increment Financing District, the first one would be the 82nd Avenue area. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the 82nd Avenue TIF district.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Ralph, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Julie.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Council.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Lumera.
Aye.
So 82nd Avenue is approved. Moving on to the Sumner, Sumner Park Rose, Argie, Columbia Corridor, or SPACE sub-district for the East Portland Tax Increment Financing District. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, Commissioner Alexander, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Vice Chair Thompson, any discussion?
Can I just clarify for the record? This is a motion to approve?
Correct. Motion to approve adoption of the, or the recommendation for SPACE. Correct. By Commissioner Alexander and then seconded by who just? Vice Chair Thompson. Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion for the SPACE sub-district? All right, roll call, please, Julie.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Council.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Lumera.
Aye.
The SPACE sub-district is approved for recommendation to city council. Next up, under the East Portland Tax Increment Financing District is the East 205 sub-district. Is there a motion to approve?
Ralph motions.
Okay, Commissioner Ralph, is there a second?
Ames, second.
Commissioner Ames, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Julie.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Council.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Lumera.
Aye. The East 205 sub-district is approved for recommendation to city council. And that is unanimous approval for the East Portland Tax Increment Financing District. So we will proceed to the central city next. And similarly, there's three sub-districts. So I will need a motion, a second, and then roll call for each. The first one is the West Side Subdistrict of the Central City TIF District. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the West Side Subdistrict.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson, is there a second?
Vice Chair Council, second.
Vice Chair, Council. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Julie.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Council.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Lumera.
Aye. The West Side Subdistrict of the Central City TIF is approved. Moving on to the Lloyd Holiday Subdistrict, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Commissioner Alexander, is there a second?
Commissioner Patel, second.
Commissioner Patel, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, and roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Council.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Lumera.
Aye. The Lloyd Holiday Subdistrict of the Central City TIF District is approved for recommendation to city council. And one more in our marathon of voting. The last is the Central East Side Corridor of the Central City TIF District. Is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Lang, any discussion? Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Thompson, for the record. I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate all of you at Prosper and Portland Housing Bureau for leading us through this process. You know, we don't have too many TIF projects that come before us and everything from the TIF 101 lessons that are arranged months in advance to just the organization of all of your presentations, consolidating a ton of information down to very tidy and digestible segments for us is very much appreciated. So great work, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. Seconds and thirds all around for the appreciation. And we are ready for roll call for the Central East Side Corridor Subdistrict.
Great. Alexander.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Council.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Patel.
Aye.
Counsel.
Aye.
Ralph.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Omera.
Aye. The Central East Side Corridor is approved for recommendation to city council, and that is unanimous vote for the Central City Tax Increment Financing District. So congratulations to the PHB and Prosper team. Echo everything that Vice Chair Thompson said. I know it's been a very compressed but active and dynamic process. Thank you all, and congratulations on moving forward to city council.
Thank you.
And that is...
Can I throw a really quick thing in?
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Just so we're all on the same page, because they're going to council really quickly, we have six separate letters drafted for your review. So when I send out draft minutes, probably tomorrow, we'll be sure to include those. If you can do a quick turnaround, just quick review of those and get any comments back to staff by end of day Thursday. That will make sure we get them into the council packet.
Yeah. And I was just going to say, Patricia Deefen, for the record, that if you, if you have any particular comments you want, please, maybe we could just take a few minutes and talk about that. I know that Commissioner Ralph, you had something you wanted to add for one of them, so maybe we could do a quick discussion on that, and then we'll include those in the letters and circulate them again. Commissioner Ralph, did you want to offer some recommendations for the letters?
Sure, thank you. Primarily, I think, appreciating, for the 80, I have a few, sorry, for the 82nd Avenue, appreciating all of the work that has gone into jurisdiction transfer and that this is, this is a really important part of a longer-term vision to, to bring that corridor to a place that, that better serves the community through the jurisdiction transfer process and legacy highways. And for the Space, I think highlighting what we heard from some written testimony, at least, to talk about the, the tension and questions, like the interested but concerned relationship between industrial and residential and institutional lands, because that does have such a, I know that that was a not insignificant part of that process, and also, you know, the Sandlot is just recognizing that that is different and, and that, you know, that the community is kind of waiting for ODOT to be a better partner. And then on the 205, I was really struck, I think, highlighting the importance of home-based businesses and finding that, bringing that into economic development, highlighting that particularly in, in an area that has so much vibrancy for immigrant and refugee-owned businesses in particular. So those, those are my main. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ralph. Other comments and suggestions? Commissioner Lang, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just add, we spoke early and often about the community engagement, the work groups that you put together, the outreach that you did, that I think was critical to getting us to, to feel comfortable with our votes today. And I'd like the recognition, not only of that, but ones passed and going forward, working in these, these different districts, that that community engagement stays at a very high level throughout. Thank you.
I had a similar comment to that one, and I was just wondering, logistically, Julie, will there be like a cover for all of these? These are six standalone letters. I'm just wondering if there are like general themes like that, that we want to elevate across all of them, if that's going to like live in each and every one? I can, oh. I believe it's in each and every one.
Yeah, I think we'll have to be succinct because I think they'll, they'll each have to stand on their own, yeah. We could probably have an opening paragraph that's consistent or a concluding paragraph that's consistent with some of the themes that we want to include in each letter.
You'll see the letters are already very similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty, oh, sorry.
Mike Alexander, feel free to attribute the frenemy phrase to me if you need to in the overarching.
Writing that down right now.
Okay, thank you so much, commissioners and staff and everyone who's participated. We will go ahead and adjourn today's planning commission meeting, and we will see you next on the November 12 afternoon for our retreat. Thank you all.